September 4th, 2024, time is 6:30 PM. This is the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everybody, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. If everything could stay in the driving for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. First, first item on the agenda is an application for a Class II license for K-GK Group doing business as the Center Auto Group located at 435 East Center Street. So if you can maybe just tell us a little bit about what's going on?
We're a used car dealership that we were in Canton and was spreading to West Bridgewater. We would be selling used vehicles, repairing those vehicles that we're selling, and that's affordable.
Just curious, is Center Auto Group the name?
Yes.
Okay. And you're aware of how many spaces you have, how many cars you can have on the lot, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's on the, I forget, because it's on the address.
Okay. Any questions or anything regarding the application?
No.
Okay. These are my questions.
I don't have any questions. Gil's awesome, like great questions, Chip.
Thank you, Mike.
Good job.
All right. Hearing nothing, entertain a motion.
Take a motion to accept the Class II license for K-GK Group, DBA Center Auto Group, located at 435 East Center Street, barring any final inspections.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Congratulations, welcome to town.
Awesome, thank you.
Wish you the best.
Have fun at bingo.
Thank you. All right. Next on the list is a vote to ratify Jill Janowski as Head Secretary for Inspection Services. Hi Jill.
Hi.
Can you just give us a brief introduction?
Hello, my name is Jill. I live in town and have four kids, come through the school system here, and I'm something. I've been involved in real estate for 25 years, done a lot with building and developing, and I'm excited to join the team here.
Super, awesome. And you live in town?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good to have you.
And Mr. Chairman, Jill, using through the HR department, followed the hiring policy as prescribed by the Board of Selectmen. So when you do take your vote for appointment, if that's the wishes of the Board, please make it effective August 26th.
August?
26th.
26th, all right. Ready for a motion?
Yeah. A vote to ratify Jill Janowski as Head Secretary of Inspection Services as of August 26th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy you're here.
She's already done big things in that office.
That's very true.
Super. Next, we have a proclamation for suicide prevention. I just accept a motion to accept it into, into the meeting.
Make a motion to accept the Suicide Prevention Proclamation, September 10th, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, approve the meeting minutes of July 24th, 2024?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 24th, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, accept the meeting, accept the meeting minutes for August 14th for review?
Accept the meeting minutes, make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 14th, 2024 for review?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next on the list is a site plan review, special permit for the planning board for dry auto modification 373 Crescent Street, Unit 13. This is the second time that this permit's come in front of us. The first time, it went to the ZBA, it was back in May, and we're here again. I'm not sure, maybe doing our zoning changes, they're back in front of the planning board, but...
So if we could just scroll to the map. Oh, okay, all right, no worries. So this here, there is multiple units in this property. And so this property here is before, has an existing approval under a special permit that has already been approved at the ZBA, and that was prior to the change of town meeting. Because this is in the Water Resource District area, originally had to go to the ZBA and the planning board, one for special permit, the other one for site plan review, and a special permit in the water district unit. Now it only has to go back before the planning board. So what they're looking to do is to modify that existing special permit, because that existing special permit prohibits auto repair. And they're looking to be in auto repair in that unit. So that is why it is before, back before the planning board, and as part of our bylaw, the Board of Selectmen acts as an advisory board to the planning board on that matter.
Yep, okay. So similar to what I said the last time, I'm not going to recommend no personally on this. I just, I don't think you lease a unit, rent a unit, whatever it is, in an area where you can't do what you, what you set out to do and then, and then ask for it. I think the precedent that is set is basically, you know, if I, if I rent something, if I lease something, I can go to the town and they'll grant it for me. And I'm concerned with that precedent, so for that reason, nothing personal against anybody doing that in this unit, but just for what it, what it says, my vote's no.
Can I ask, what else is in there?
It is originally, the special permit is originally designed to be a contractor's yard, so, and because there was multiple bays, it was allowing multiple tenants or various tenants to be able to store items really to a contractor's yard, or the storage of vehicles or the storage of parts. This original permit specifically prohibited actual repairing of any of that material. So that's what they're looking to do, is modify it in order to be able to conduct that type of business.
Do we know what kind of repairs they're doing?
According to their report, it's automotive, so it looks like they're looking to do light repair, brake jobs is what's specifically mentioned.
I think, I think a word used was dry repair, like no oils, no fluids.
Yeah, which...
Metals.
Which I'm not exactly sure why they applied for that, in that vein, because what, whenever I see that, what that tells me is that there is not already an oil separator tank on premise, however, is part of the original permit granted by the planning board, that was already a requirement of the facility in general. So there's already two 2,000 gallon tanks, tight tanks, that are already on property specifically for...
Oil water.
Oil and water separators. So I'm surprised that they're making that request. I don't know exactly why, but again, that's their request.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going with, with my questioning. I don't personally have an issue with someone, a business trying to make a living, especially, I know that there is, there's already a tire repair shop in there, or a tire storage.
I believe it's a tire storage. I don't know if it's tire repair, but it's definitely, we know that they're storing tires. They may be doing other work, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I've been through that yard.
You know, the difficulty with this property, if we just zoom out just a little bit, I don't know how much we can capture. The difficulty with this property is that it is where Crescent and West Street meet. And so this is what we refer to as a legal, pre-existing non-conforming property, because it, as a commercial use, existed well before there was zoning. So it is entirely, it is entirely surrounded by residential properties.
Not in front of it, just behind it, correct?
On both sides.
Yeah, on left and right, but directly across from it?
Well, directly across from it, a little bit kitty corner is, is Copper Beach.
Okay.
It's fairly close.
Yeah, you got Crescent and West, really?
Correct.
I mean, it's on the corner of Crescent West, basically.
And so there's residential properties on West Street as well.
And it looks like they only have two vehicles that they can store there, like not a lot of vehicles that they could work on at a time.
Well, I think, my point, Mike, is if you do this for one, you're going to end up doing it for more. It's, personally, it's, you know, crack the egg.
Just don't see, I just don't see a business holding themselves back if they're making a living.
Yeah, I think the last time this came before, my question was if we had had any complaints from the abutters, any of the residents before, and I don't think you, I think you said there hadn't been any complaints, correct?
My office is not receiving, no, that's correct.
Are they operating now?
That is my, they were, I don't believe they're operating today, but they were.
If I remember correctly, they stopped operating once they realized they were not doing it correctly?
That's correct. So again, I'm, my information is a couple of months old, and I can't, the source of that information, I can't speak to at this point, but it is my understanding that when the enforcement officer went there, there was a little bit of a language barrier, and they believed, because there is a legal permit for a commercial use, they thought that they were operating under that legal permit. That legal permit is allowed for a contractor's yard in affiliated activities, but it specifically prohibits vehicle repair. So as a result of that, they did stop their use, and they now, at least to their credit, they then said, okay, well, I'll follow the adequate process, and that is what they're doing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with this.
I don't have a recommendation, one way or another. I mean, I commend them for doing the right thing now. I'm with Jeff with, you know, if you're operating outside of the town bylaws and laws, I'm not a fan of it. But if they have stopped and they're trying to go through the right channels and proper procedure to be legally operating?
Compliant.
Yeah, and compliant, then I'm okay with that, but I think we're only giving recommendations, right, to, to the planning board anyway?
That is correct. So usually at this point is when you would say, please be courteous to neighbors, we're concerned about lighting, we're concerned about fencing, all those types of items. I think if I'm reading the room right, what the chairman is actually advocating is that the board were to take a vote to say to the planning board, we would recommend that you do not approve the permit. I don't know if I've, if I've captured that correctly. So you always have that option as a board, because you're advisory, is to always say, we just don't think this is an appropriate use, or what have you. They obviously, as the regulatory board makes the final decision.
As long as they comply with everything you just said, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Oh, boy.
It's, it's a non, it's a recommendation.
Exactly, so I mean, you know, I, I don't fall anywhere. I don't, I don't have a recommendation, honestly. I mean, my recommendation is obviously to be courteous to the neighbors and the lighting and the sound and all of that, but I'm not completely against it. It looks like they are in an area that is doing similar work, or I know that you said at one point there was a lot of tires there and stuff, there's a...
That's true, but that was for a different unit, not specific to this unit.
Right. I just, I don't really have a problem with it. It doesn't seem as though the neighbors have a problem with it, because there haven't been any complaints that we know of, so.
Yeah, well, the hours are, that are listed on this piece of paper, so to speak.
Seven to six.
Seven to six, so Saturday, eight to five, so. Those are decent, respectful hours, I think.
I agree. And they're not open on Sunday, which is also a big deal for me, at least.
All right. Do you have an offer, do we need, want me to formalize that in some manner, or?
Well, I think at least the majority of the board is stating that they are not against the project, and as a result, we don't normally state whether you're in favor or against. So if you want to memorialize that as a motion, you can. If not, then we will just capture that a majority of the board, or unanimous of the board, whatever you prefer, wants to make sure that we remain courteous to neighbors and have the appropriate screening and those types of items. So whether you want, because even though you're against it...
The board as a whole, yeah.
You're still in favor, I assume, with all those other mitigating factors, so...
In favor of what?
Making sure there's appropriate lighting, screening, and all that stuff.
Oh, yes.
So that's why I say, I want to make sure we capture it correctly. If I say a majority of the board is in favor of screening, I don't want there to be a missed notion that somebody thinks that you're like, no, I don't care about screening. So that's why, just memorial is what you want us to say, and we'll make sure we capture that.
Super, thank you. Anything, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item is communications from, reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. First is vote to appoint pole worker Donald Martin.
Yeah, so, so all pole workers work at the discretion of the town clerk with the Board of Selectmen's approval, and so this would be for the, the general election will be held in November.
Motion, make a motion to appoint pole worker Donald Martin.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just an FYI, Brian McSweeney's resignation from the Water Department. I'm curious, was Brian, do you know if Brian was one of the people that carried licenses?
He did.
So we're down to one person at the Water Department right now on licenses, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Nothing more to do there. Correspondence from the public, we have none, public comment period, we have one member of the public, quote unquote. How are you?
No real comment, but, sorry, it's public, but just an FYI, our board discussed Zero Bryant Street tonight, I don't know if you guys already touched on that?
No, we were waiting for everything to come in from all the other committees before we have a discussion, so it'll probably be our next meeting.
Because we are in favor with it, along with the other public boards.
Okay. Yeah, so I think, I don't want to speak, but I think probably next meeting or the one after.
As long as we receive the letter, so as part of the 61k legal process, other boards are advisory to this board, and so we've received those other letters in, the Board of Assessors met this evening, so I suspect they'll receive that letter in the next couple of days, and assuming we do, it will be on your next agenda.
Okay. All right, anything else, Paul?
No, I'm good for now.
All right. Town administrators support.
Sure, thank you. So really, the primary focus I want to focus on tonight is ARPA funds. So for those of you who do not know or do not recall, ARPA funds were federally designated funds under the American Rescue Act that was passed in 2021, where just about every municipality in the country, along with state agency, state governments and other agencies, received funding from the federal government, and there was some response to COVID in attempting to make sure that we had enough cash to continue operations. Many municipalities immediately spent all their funds, especially if they were short on their internal funds, and we were fortunate where we didn't. So basically what I do is I broke this up into three categories, so that way you can understand exactly what I'm saying, and then I'll be looking for a vote after some discussion at the end. So the state received a couple of billion dollars of, of ARPA funds. Out of that, those monies, they allocated some of those funds to municipalities, and to West Bridgewater, they allocated $100,000. The Water Department received all of those funds under a vote from the Board of Selectmen a handful of years ago, and so they have received, we received the 100,000, they have spent the 100,000, and so those funds have been exhausted. And the Water Department has been spending whatever monies they have received exclusively on the PFAS treatment plant on Mainly Street. So that is the entire state funds that have now been exhausted. Next page, please. These funds, actually, yeah, so these funds are actually from the county. So most states in the country are county-based. In Massachusetts, we know that we're more municipal-based. So Plymouth County received about 800, I think it was 800, about 800 million dollars, and then they allocated those funds appropriately. Out of those funds, West Bridgewater received about 1.3 million dollars. Out of the 1.3 million dollars, the Board of Selectmen allocated all of those funds, 100%, to go to the Water Department, so therefore the Water Department, knowing they would get up to spend 10, 14, 18 million dollars on that water treatment plant, to try to minimize that impact to the local West Bridgewater resident. So again, I think that the Board of Selectmen have shown a lot of courage and leadership on this issue, because we could have spent that money anywhere, right, and maybe not have made as much of an impact. But by providing 1.3 million dollars from the county, and 100,000 dollars from the state, that's 1.4 million, that the local West Bridgewater resident doesn't have to come up with. Those funds are not exhausted yet, the Water Department has spent about 189,000, however, the bulk of those funds will be expended over the next handful of months, we will report them accordingly, and they will be exhausted as part of that project. The third sheet is money that was allocated directly to the town, that the Board of Selectmen has the exclusive authority to be able to spend as well. And originally, the original amount that was provided was about 762,000. At the same time, the Board of Selectmen earmarked about 300,000 dollars to go to engineering funds to build the water treatment plant as a temporary fix three years ago. So all told, the Selectmen have allocated money that could have went anywhere in town, about 1.7 million dollars to the Water Department to help offset all of their costs. Many of the towns that spent their monies immediately did so. We have not spent all of our money on the town side, and one of the benefits to that was that, one, I wanted to see as to what other projects we'd come up with. And the second is, is that you'll see in the left-hand column, by simply allowing this money to sit in the account and not be expended, we were able to generate 43,000 dollars in free money. I don't know why other municipalities didn't do that, but whatever, you know what, that's their town. But that's 43,000 dollars that we now have additional funds, simply because we let the money sit there. However, by federal law, I have to obligate these funds by the end of the year, and they have to be expended by the end of the calendar year 2026. One item of note on that, because I would like to spend the money as quickly as possible, there has been political discussion that because of where we are at the federal level, especially deficit-driven, is that there is about 80 billion dollars of these funds nationwide that have not been spent. And there have been some lawmakers who have said if they haven't spent it, we should bring that money back, or claw it back, and therefore try to offset the federal, at the federal level for deficit spending. Again, that would require legislative action, a presidential approval, and a lot of things could happen between now and then. So I would rather not risk that. I would much rather, do we have a cat? Okay. The, so I would rather not risk that, so the quicker we spend the monies now, I would like to be able to do that. So with that said, we have about, we have about 508,000 dollars that the Board of Selectmen have that's available to spend, that I would like to try to obligate as quickly as possible. And my recommendations to the board are as follows. We desperately need to complete the transfer station building. We have, we went to town meeting a handful of years ago, we received funding for it, but as we all know, with the way inflation has been over the last handful of years, is that we've seen continuous price increases on that project. So unfortunately, we are about 175,000 dollars short as to what we need to complete that project. We also received funding at town meeting in reference to a cold storage building at the Department of Public Works. We're about 93,000 dollars short. So with our new DPW director, I tasked him with the fact that I wanted these projects to be first and foremost on his list. He's done an exceptional job to make sure that we have all of the paperwork and everything necessary to move forward as quickly as possible. And so I will need a vote of the board to allow the allocation of those funds. I am not looking for a vote of the board for exactly 93,075 dollars. It's a construction project. We may spend a few dollars less and a few dollars more, like any other construction project, but I need to make sure the board has to vote that we are allowed to be able to use the funds for those projects. Third on the list is that I have felt, I've been very concerned for a number of years of the stairway in the front of the town hall. A handful of years ago, we had somebody fall and have an injury, and thankfully it wasn't that serious. But anybody who uses those stairs knows, they literally disappear as you turn around the corner. They're dark, and there's not very good lighting. And what's surprising is if you go there, there are three square lights that are in that stairwell, and when I got here 11 years ago, there was one. I was so dark, I'm like, I can't believe people are not getting hurt. We also have a storage area over there, we have a historical building that is not ADA compliant, cannot be used, and there is also additional closet space that is unsafe to be able to use, and therefore there is a sign that says, do not enter. What I would like to do is I would like to be able to re-engineer that whole front area, so hopefully we can create additional storage space, but we can also meet code, and we all, have a historical commission that can actually meet in that area or use it for a different purpose. And most importantly, is make sure that that stairway is usable by all. Unfortunately, it's an old building, and it's going to require some extensive engineering work to figure out how to be able to carry the loads. As you know, when you stand in the middle of that staircase, you look up, you've got a solid 20 to 25 feet before you get to the ceiling. So all of that has to be reconfigured. So we have an engineering firm who has briefly looked at it in the past, that is their quote to be able to do all the engineering with some ideas as to what we have, to try to expand on that. I understand we will have to go to town meeting at a later date to secure funding, but we have to know what we can do and how much it will cost. The town hall building project, I've already received a vote from the board on this in the past, but we know that we had money set aside to renovate the building department, and as part of that building department renovation, we also did air conditioners throughout the entire building, and we had some cost overruns as well, because we had some structural issues that we had to deal with. You've already informed me in the past that we could transfer money on that, but again, that has to be disclosed on the sheet. The next one is a little bit new, but I look at this screen, and I don't like that. And when I say that, I mean the wire. There's no reason why we can't clean that up a little bit. The other part is, is that Ben is here, and he's prepared to speak to it if the Selectmen like this idea, but part of our thought process is, is to be able to go to wireless microphones, so that way these are not in front of us taking up space. Also, what you do not see, and kudos to Christine and Linda and Ben, is that whenever this meeting room gets transformed into the finance committee meetings, and Jeff, you'll probably recall this, is that we have to reconfigure the office, move all the microphones, it's not easy to do, and you have wires everywhere. So the thought process is, is that we can try to update our microphone system in this room. In addition to that, is that there is a conference room downstairs that does not have a monitor, so add a monitor there, and in a larger one, is that maybe we can reconfigure, because those cables there are not hidden from view either. So Ben, is there anything you would like to add to that?
Is there any questions, what might have? I'm not there, kind of nailed it.
So what's the recommendation? Go to like a TV monitor, not a projector?
No, this monitor would stay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ron.
We would add one downstairs, and be a small conference room, to the larger one.
And what, removing these microphones and then wireless microphones?
So these microphones will be removed, the cable box that's under your area will be removed. We will get two receivers on this end, I have looked at prices, it is on the high end, but that's the most premier audio that we get. I would like to stick with the gooseneck mics, the long, that's what they're called, the long mics, just because they do pick up the best voice. We do have some other mics down by downstairs, we have a boundary mic, which is not too bad, but I think I would still want to prefer that. We just, we wouldn't have any wiring, so we'll just reconfigure the mics, because we will be very simple.
Yeah, what's the dollar mark you're looking for?
25,000. A lot of that comes from the receiver end, because it's either you buy four or you buy 10, you really, there's no number in between. But having 10 would at least allow us for repair replacements, but receivers are like a big one, it is, that is probably around 5,000, 6,000, you have to have two, plus mics, it's actually eight mics, excuse me, I said 10, each mic's about five bucks, so...
Philly, that's a big number. It's a big number, and we're getting ready to ask the town, it sounds like we may be asking the town for more money for other projects as well, it sounds like a big number.
So my number one motivation always is, is to try to manipulate the budget as best as we can to minimize the impact to the West Bridgewater residents. The money that Ben in the cable department receives money in from Comcast, they have the money, they could spend the money, and they could retrofit this building, and we don't have, retrofit this meeting room, and we don't have to spend that 20,000 dollars, we could do it for other purposes. The reason I'm recommending we use these funds is because these are one and done. If we don't use them, we lose them, or we'd have to turn it somewhere else. His account is in what they call a revolving account, so that money comes in from Comcast... Uh, as that money comes in, is that it stays in the account on an annual basis, and whatever is not spent can be spent at a later date for all applicable legal reasons. He can't go buy a car with it, but he would be able to retrofit this office. So I like the idea of him being able to keep the money in that account, because as we move forward, is that he's always gonna be able to access those dollars, and if they're not spent, they just add up over time. If I don't spend these dollars, we lose them. So if we don't wanna do that project, that's an entirely different story, then obviously we don't have to spend them, these funds or his funds. But if we like the idea of that project, I think we'd be better off using one and done funds than using his funds, so we can repurpose them at a later date, since he has more flexibility. Just a thought. Um, and, um, and the last is, is that we have, we have four bathrooms in this town hall. Um, I'm not looking to change flooring or any of those things, all I wanna do is that the, the, uh, the vanities are in horrible shape, especially the one downstairs. One of the doors does not close appropriately, not very good if you're trying to go.
Pull up.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and that one there is actually primarily used by the general public, not just by employees. So it's even worse, so, um, again, these are general ballpark numbers. I don't anticipate we'll spend all of them for those purposes, but I had to put some type of a budget together, so you have an idea as to what you're voting on. So all I'm looking for is a direction from the board in general terms, are you okay with these projects? That you would, uh, release the funds towards those projects? And that whatever is left over, my recommendation right now is, it's fifty-nine thousand, there'll probably be some monies left over from there. Is that whatever is left over from that, I would like to see the DPW department receive it and just put it towards their sidewalks and, um, and try to do it from that. So it might not be fifty-nine, and if you don't wanna do the microphones, immediately it becomes seventy-nine, or thereabouts. So, um, I just need direction from the board, so we could start moving forward on the projects.
So on the, um, on the first floor conference room, I, I would just, as, I don't spend as much time on them as, as Ben does, but I do spend some time there. Um, you know, the Rose McDonald Room, I think the Conservation Commission, as they set up, makes it a little more friendly and, and, and easier for the public, um, versus how some other boards do, so I just, my only thought in there is maybe we, we can talk to all of the, um, all of the committees and try to come to a general consensus. And then with that, maybe that TV that's in that room goes into the, uh, smaller room, and we can put something a little bigger, maybe a little better there, because that room tends to be the primary room. But I'll let you, you know, uh, we don't meet in there, I don't, I don't have a. I, I do think, you know, again, as conservation lines it up and sets it up, it's a little easier for everybody to see. Um, planning board, you tend to get, you're, you're looking at the backside of a developer who's presenting to the planning board, but it blocks the public completely. Uh, so I'd love to see the planning board adopt the technology the way that the Conservation Commission does, where it's on the screen, and everybody's looking at, at everything, and that might be a slightly bigger screen in that room and repurpose the one that's in there somehow.
I second that.
Yeah.
Do like the way the conservation sets it up, it is much more resident-friendly.
But I, I, that's not, that's just a thought, you guys go with what you, what you can. I don't know how, I don't, honestly don't know how it looks on camera for you that way.
Go.
Yeah. Mike, I don't know, you got other, I know you were.
No, I'm just, I, I mean, I love beautification projects, absolutely love them, but I just feel like we're, the town's getting ready to spend so much money on so many different things. And I'd like to see money being, like, used more to, for relief, and I understand we have to use it or lose it type of scenario with, with this money. Um, is there anything else we could, to just give the taxpayers more relief and, and, and come up with these beautification projects later? Like, I, I love the beautification project, it's, it's great, because it's, when people come into the town, this is, this is their town, this is the stuff they're gonna see. Um, but I just, I mean, we've delivered like this for a little while, kind of, and it's like, can we do it later?
So there are restrictions on the money, so for example, we can't put in stabilization, we cannot pay out debt, we cannot augment budgets. So, um, you know, those are three large restrictions, that's why it's basically for one-time projects. What I would, I would respectfully state is, is that let's assume that we don't do the bathrooms. One day you're gonna have to, and when you do, you're gonna go to the taxpayer and say, I need money. We're relieving that onus on them now by using this money. Um, none of the, nothing on here, I mean, look, if we don't ever wanna change the front stairwell, we've lived with it this long, but I just can't believe sooner or later someone's not gonna get injured. It's a safety hazard, it's just not a good, it's not a good setup. Um, but again, we've lived with it this long, you're entirely right, so we can not spend thirty-one thousand dollars in engineering and hope that nothing ever happens, but if it does, my guess is it'll cost us more, we'll end up renovating, and we'll go to the taxpayer and ask them for thirty-one thousand dollars or more to do the engineering. So I feel like we are deferring the cost to them. All right. It's really a matter of just whether or not these projects are pri- are primary enough concern, or if you said, you know what, the stairwell is great, but to be honest with you, I'd rather do this. You know, and for example, if you want some thought on that, I would like to move forward immediately with the cold storage building, the transfer station building. Really, ideally, I'd like to be able to move forward immediately with getting the engineering done, because again, I need to obligate those funds as quickly as possible. You've already voted on the town hall, but I'm gonna just ask you to memorialize that one more time. But if you don't like the town bathroom ones, and you don't like the speakers, then just tell me you don't wanna spend it on that, and you wanna spend all of the, the balance on sidewalks or on something else, and that's what we'll do. You know, it's your decision, you have the exclusive authority to be able to allocate the funds without appropriation from the legislative body.
I don't object to any of them, so I'm okay with them. Get that out of the way.
As am I. I hear what you're saying, but it, it's, it, uh, on some of this is just shuffle of the deck, where the money comes from over here or over there.
No, and, and he made some valid points, I mean, it, it, Ben, Ben didn't really sell me on how we needing that, this, the, the audio. Um, but I mean, if you guys are good with it, then let's be good with it.
So if it's okay with you, what I would like to do is, is that I will ask you to take a vote that you will authorize spending in these respective categories with whatever the balance is left over, for us to be able to place towards sidewalks. If you're okay with that, that's, that's what I would be requesting.
Okay. Do you want to make that, or do you want me to make it?
Uh, make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, transfer of funds as presented, and, uh, the remainder balance be moved to, uh, sidewalks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So thank you on that, and the last item, which is, uh, we, you know, right now, our next meeting is scheduled for September eighteenth, however, I will have a conversation with you, because that may change.
Yep.
Um, and last item, which just came in today, is that we were contacted from the Department of Public Health. We have posted this on our website, uh, that there have, there has been two cases found in West Bridgewater, one sampling of mosquitoes for West Nile, and the other case for triple E. So, um, just again, FYI, we all know it's out there, it is out there, um, wear your, wear your spray and just be careful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board? Anything, Mike? I'll detain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.